Richard Wills.
Here.
And Patrick Brunstad, I don't see. Okay.
So I would make a motion to excuse Pat Brunstad, but still in the hopes that he may tune in before the meeting's over.
Why don't we wait with that motion?
I've texted him. I know he had some, I know he had things going on, but he was, he was planning on being on this.
Okay.
I would draw the motion then.
Do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Is Eleanor and Greg? And Richard, you're taking notes.
I am taking notes.
Okay.
And Greg Cox seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? No move. Motion to approve the minutes of May 25th, 2021.
Second.
Who, who, who moved?
Yes.
Who? Richard. Okay, Rich. And Greg Cox seconded.
Oh, here's Pat. Okay.
I make a motion to withdraw my motion to excuse Pat Brunstad.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Dan, what was, what was the date of the last meeting?
The 25th, May 25th. So there's no discussion? So move then. We are to public comments. There will be public comment.
I did not receive any written public comment. However, we do have citizens on the line. Marlene Penry, do you have a public comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I missed the last couple of meetings, so I'm not really sure exactly where in your chart on design, on architectural standards you are. So I might be premature, or I might be too late, whatever. Wish I was a little more organized. Just first, in general, I wanted to comment on the idea of moving all the things that you've been talking about into a 1750 chapter in general, rather than inside of the other zoning codes. And I think that sounds like a really good idea for things like roofing and siding and screening and, and things like that. I think it might be a little problem when you get into the multifamily units and things like the front porches and the articulations and stuff like that. It might be a problem. I haven't thought it all the way through. But I do like the idea of pulling them all into a concise place in code. I would think, though, if you're going to do this, I would suggest it be elevated out of the middle of, of miscellaneous provisions, since I think architectural design is a lot more than miscellaneous. I think that it could be its own 1750 chapter section in itself. So again, not knowing exactly where you are in here, I have a comment on number seven, where it says the architectural style of garage shop or shed must match the style of primary structure. I take a little exception to shed there because you can buy pre-manufactured sheds and a lot of different kinds of materials that aren't going to look just like your house. Item eight, screening, I'm, I'm a little bit confused. If I'm understanding right, the left column is what you're proposing to put in the code and that's something completely, appears to be something completely new. I do, I do wonder about things like public utilities, really confused on what screaming public utilities means, since obviously things like electrical boxes, cable boxes, anything, things like that that are placed on a side wall are still visible from the street. So I'm not sure what you meant by public utilities. I also wonder about the inclusion of propane tanks, because they certainly aren't screened now. There's a lot of them visible from the street and I, you know, perhaps you're proposing a change to that. So if you're not proposing a change there, that isn't the way it is now, I don't think. Okay, second column, I'm a little confused about because you aren't proposing to move 832030 into 175210, are you? This is rhetorical question, not one I'm certain you'd answer. Because this C item here is part of our nuisance code and you certainly wouldn't want to move it out of the nuisance code. Then on 175120 fences, this is an interesting one, because you might want to move it into the, into the 1750, whatever, 210. Because aren't fences part of the architectural look of a house when you drive by? Like, I didn't find any place that said front fences can't be higher than four feet. And there's, you know, a lot of problems with the fencing code the way it is and there's some changes that could need, need to be changed to 175120, even if you don't elevate it. For one thing, it's, it says, "No fence wall or vegetation when used for screening may exceed six feet in height." I believe they meant the vegetation when used for screening. But it makes it sound like anything that's not used for screening has no limits. So it's worded very poorly and it makes you, it makes it sound like anything can be much higher than that. People use, and plus people use fences for things other than screening, like keeping dogs in and keeping deer out. So I think the wording here, the more I thought about it, I think they meant screening vegetation, not the overall screening. But it needs, something needs to be fixed there. And then screening, you can screen with trees and they should not have a height limit on them. So big problems with 175120A and then a question whether you want to move fences into architectural or design standards. I think, I think that's all I have for now. Thank you very much.
The next citizen is Anne Reese. Anne, do you have a public comment?
Just a brief one, and that's primarily having to do with the new provision for wanting to screen the utilities and propane tanks and such. One, if, if we're going to grandfather in the however many thousand houses that we already have, then what's the point in making all new construction comply with, with this new requirement? Second, I don't, I, I agree with the, the last comment that, you know, a lot of these public utilities are further out toward the street. And I don't know how reasonable it is to try and, and screen those. And regarding propane tanks, there's not a lot of room on the side of my house, for example, for accessibility for, for filling that propane tank. And if I put up some kind of a hedge or a fence or something, then I could be impeding access to that tank either for filling or in the, the event of an emergency, so that the fire department could secure the propane at the tank if there were a problem at my house. So I tend to question adding this at all. Certainly, we don't want to allow anybody to put a propane tank in front of their house. But if it's, you know, down the side of the house and, you know, not like in your face out in front, I don't know why we would be requiring screening all of this stuff now when it hasn't been a requirement in the past. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Going to turn it over to Tanya in a minute to lead our discussion, or Richard, I don't know which one is going to do it today. But I wanted to make a comment about something that I've seen recently and it just dawned on me that we haven't addressed this at all. I have a house, two houses over, three houses over. The guy's a contractor for Aberdeen and he comes out and leaves construction equipment in his front yard. And he's had a man lift there for, since last August. And there's nothing in the code that says he can't do that. That's what Alicia told. So while we're going. Pardon?
I'm sorry. I was reading today and I thought I saw something that forbid construction type equipment to be stalled in the yard.
If they, what, what Alicia told me, bring it in and out quickly, there's nothing you can, that's, that's the part they can't do. If they, if they bring it for a little bit and then take it away. But she said if there was a, like this man lift that's been there since August, there's nothing they can do. That didn't make sense to me. So we should research that. Greg?
I'm, you know, as you guys have brought up and, and even our guests have brought up, we're dealing with issues that are way beyond building designs. That's what this all started with. And, you know, if, if that's what the planning commission wants to do is continue to rewrite the code from front to back, I suppose we can keep doing this and, but we've spent three months on this building design standards, not building standards per se. And it's, it's sort of frustrating to me that now we're talking about fences and screening and we've got lighting built into the, the changes that we're recommending and we've gone way beyond our charge. And, you know, based on the summary that Richard put together under notes and observations, you know, after spending three months on this, we really have not come up with anything earth shattering. For all practical purposes, we've managed to put, as some people might say, lipstick on a pig. We have not changed demonstrably the structural integrity issues associated with manufactured homes in this climate. So we're hardly talking about building standards. We're talking about some aesthetics. And they were focused originally on manufactured homes and we decided we would make it all encompassing, which I understand. But now we've gotten into, you know, whether or not people can park cars in their driveway or vehicles or machinery. And it just strikes me that we're way beyond our original charge. And as I told Richard in reviewing everything that had been put together to this point, I think it's, we're ready to send it on. Based on the, the, the protocol that Sarah outlined at our last meeting, there's, goodness gracious, three to five more steps that these kind of changes in the code have to go through before they ever are, are implemented. Not to include how long it'll take the city council to get through it. So I think time's sort of the essence. We need to get on with it. I, again, I, I think that the modifications that we've made for aesthetics are on track and are indeed an improvement. But let's face it, you can't move a manufactured home into this climate and without addressing actual building standards, expect it to last as long as a regular stick build home. And eventually it's going to become an eyesore. So given the, the, the soft gloves that we've used to deal with the, the original issue, this continuing to expand the, the scope of what we were originally charged to do is sort of frustrating to me.
Okay. Tanya? Give your hand up.
Nope, I did not. Thank you.
That was my hand. Sorry. Richard?
So Greg, I, I'm not sure that I agree with you on many of the issues that you bring up. And, and I'm, was sitting here as you were talking, trying to think to myself, okay, so where would we address things like the man lift parked in the front yard? And it could be in the nuisance ordinance, but I think that it may be just as appropriate here. The other comment that I would say on the work that we've done is I think after reading through these ordinances, actually a few times, I think that we have the, the bones of a, of a pretty good ordinance. And basically what we're doing is we're discovering, yes, the bones of our ordinances are good and they can stand a little bit of tweaking. And that's what we're doing right now is just tweaking where it needs tweaking and the end product, I think, will benefit the city. So that's just my two cents worth.
Anybody else on general hours or do we want to move on to what was presented, what was being presented today? Okay. Tanya, I guess it's yours.
Okay, thank you, guys. So Richard, I don't know if you want to talk about what you put together between the last meeting and now. And so I'm, do you want to be leading this or do you?
So I'm, I'm the, the note taker today. But before you get started, and if you follow my notes, I think it's quite appropriate that you perhaps lead this discussion. But what I would prefer by saying is as we were close to a journey in the last meeting, you put out a request for help and I didn't jump forward at that time because I wasn't sure I was ready to commit. And then as I started looking at what we're doing, I said, oh, I see a way to maybe simplify much of what we're doing. And it goes to what Marlene was talking about, where do we put these changes? And so I like the format of your document that has the columns. I didn't make any changes to that document except a couple of places in red. And almost all of my changes are what chapter those changes listed should go in. On the other hand, the, in this, in this notes that Greg refers to, I put a lot of changes and I put those in red and I also had sidebar comments. But the big thing that I found is that, oh, let's see, 17 dot 50 dot 210, is that correct? I've got to get the right screen open. Seems to me to be the appropriate place for almost everything, except there was just a couple of things that were mobile or manufactured home specific. And as we go through this document, all of my notes are unread and all of my sidebar notes are there. And those notes say everything that you already have in front of you. And I don't see anything to be gained by us hashing through those one at a time, except that as a group to say, yes, this sounds good, or no, it doesn't, and this would be better. And if, Tanya, if you facilitated that discussion and then I can focus on taking notes and trying to keep up with the conversation, that would be my preference.
Okay, thanks, Richard. Okay, so just to recap, if I can share my screen here. Okay, so once we're, once I can share my screen, I'll pull up the documents that we are talking about. But when we left the last meeting, we were actually discussing a minimum porch size for the primary entrance of a home. I don't know if you all remember that, but we had left off at that point. So maybe we could actually revisit that and, and then go from there. Okay.
I recall Eleanor having a suggestion.
Yes.
Forgotten the dimensions that you kind of had suggested, Eleanor.
Um, I'm thinking it was a five by six.
About at least 30 square feet.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you can see the screen I just pulled up. So let me start at the beginning. So this is the document that I put together as a proposed template for communicating with council regarding changes we're suggesting making to the code. This is a working document. It is something that we're actively changing as we make decisions and discussion. So anyhow, we worked through a number of these items at the last meeting and we left off down at item number six with porches, decks and patios. So did we?
I've got a question for Pat. Being a builder, Pat, do you have a suggestion on a suggested size based on the way you have to buy wood, the way it ties into the roof line, those kinds of things?
And mute there. Um, you know, if, if, so if we're trying to do, say, a 30 square feet, so if you did a three by eight deck or a four by eight deck, four by eight would be what?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. So eight foot is kind of the increments that things come in.
Okay.
So you, you go eight foot, 10 foot, 12 foot, they go in two foot increments, but they started eight foot. So that wouldn't put too big of a burden on it. So if you use eight as your starting point.
We said 32 square feet, that's, that's a sheet of plywood. It makes the dimensions maybe easier for the builders?
Yeah, I mean, it's, although, are we talking, are we talking about all porches or are we talking about?
Minimum porch size.
Porch, all porches. I don't know.
We're talking about the primary pedestrian entrance, so basically the front door.
Gotcha. I, I wasn't part of that conversation.
Sure. Yeah. And we're talking about a covered porch or deck.
Okay. So thinking about houses that we've built in the past, and I think the minimum would have been something like six by five. So that's 30 square feet. So I think, I think that works. I really do.
I think that's a good minimum. Our, our house was built just a few years ago and it has a five by six. And I would think that that would be the minimum. Anything else could actually be a safety hazard. You get something too small with a step off. So I, I would see the minimum as thirty.
But covered. So, so objectively, I, I get that we would have a, an entrance deck, but I don't know about covering that deck.
Right. Do, would, do we want to cover the whole thing or do we just want some type of cover? Because we had this, we, we were requesting a covered front entrance and it says eave overhang alone does not constitute cover. So we're asking for more than just eaves. But we're not specifying how much of that has to be covered.
So the way the code's written today is you can encroach into a setback a third with an uncovered porch. But if it's covered, it cannot be in the setback. So you have to consider that when you're doing your designs and whatnot, because you know, if you're requiring somebody to build a 30 square foot deck and then you cover it, well, now that can't be in the setback. That's got to be back behind the setback. So is that going to limit what people are able to do with their property?
Don't most people have a cover over their front door?
Not all, no.
No, no, they don't. I mean, they're crazy if they don't, but they don't.
Why we're addressing it here?
Right. So Rich, your house before it was remodeled, didn't have a covered porch.
Correct. And you made me put a covered porch on it because you knew the planning commission was going to address this.
Yeah, that was it.
Way to plan ahead.
So I mean, there's, there are a lot of homes out there that don't have covered porches. So I, I, I mean, I'm all for it. I just want to make sure that, that, that we're considering everything on this.
My, my comment, Pat, I hear what you're saying about square feet encroaching into the, the setback space. But I, I have a hard time visualizing where 30 square feet at the front entrance would ever impact the setback. And, and I think that we're all in agreement that having some type of cover immediately over the front entry door is, is a good thing, both aesthetically and for longevity of that entryway. And so I was trying to say, how would we word that, that you have to have at least a 30 square foot section just above the front door covered? But the rest of it could be open deck or not, uncovered deck or not. The, you know, the, the, the builders or the residents' choice. The other comment that I have on this part is as I was reading the actual code, and we don't have to go to that page, I have a note in it on, on the sidebar comments. But the way it was originally written, when I first read it the first couple of times, I said, oh, you can't put a deck on a manufactured home that's less than 35 feet long. And, and then I reread that and finally said, what they really said is that the deck has to be 35 feet long on the factory home. So as we get to that portion of what we're doing, I just want to plant a seed. We need to look at the way that that's actually worded.
Eleanor?
Um, to get back to the setback and the porch, not all front doors are on the front of the house. Mine is on the side of the house. The garage is on the front and you have to come past the garage, which puts, puts the front entry on the side of the house. So it is conceivable that there could be a setback problem. Unless we own, exclude the five by six cover over a five by six porch. I wouldn't think that would be a problem encroaching. But that's.
Really, it's really only a problem if, if they're not aware of the new rules. You know, if you're building a house, you would adapt to this.
I guess the only point was it, it could get into a setback problem because not all front doors are on the front of the house.
I agree.
Question I would ask is when the front door is on the side of the house, did the builder sight the house in a way that there is more than a five foot setback to the side yard?
Yeah.
You'll sign.
Well, the, the challenge is, is that, you know, you, there's some 50 foot lots out there. You didn't sign a 40 foot house and if the, if the entrance is on the side, then it becomes problematic to cover it. So do you just take those plans and say, no, they're not going to work on a 50 foot lot?
I mean, do we really care if they put a cover over the front door?
Yes, we do. That was the whole point of how this meeting started. We were trying to adopt standards that would help all types of construction blend together and some, some manufactured homes at this point haven't had this quality.
Not just manufactured homes.
I'm just not sure. I mean, I think it makes sense to put a cover over it. I'm just not sure we ought to be that picky about it. I, because with a narrow lot, we could be limiting people's ability to put what they want on the lot. And I don't think it really changes the character of the house that much.
So my thought is, is when we went into this, we have two objectives. And one objective is to create an aesthetically pleasing neighborhood. And the other objective is, is to create a set of rules that will demand that structures be built to withstand or better, better, to better withstand the severe weather conditions that we have here. So, so I agree with Rich Hartman. I think that demanding that we have this, this 30 square foot covered porch over the front door. And if, if your building plan and your lot doesn't fit that, then I think you need to change your building plan. Because we want to address both the aesthetics and the, the long-term livability of the structure. So I think that enforcing or mandating this porch helps both of those endeavors, aesthetics and long-term livability.
Anybody else? I can't see everybody else.
I, I, I support what Richard just said.
And we had talked about covered portions for a long time in different, in different times to the planning commission.
In different, in different times to the planning commission. So I, I, I agree with that, I think we ought to have covered porch. Now, does it have to be the whole porch just to cover it? I don't know, but I think that's right, but. How do you, how do you do that, Pat? What's your thoughts on how much of porch can you cover? Well, I mean, if we're gonna set this thing up for thirty square feet, that's really not that much. So I'd say minimum square footage, thirty, thirty square feet of porch and cover. And if they want to build the porch bigger, they build it bigger, but thirty square feet of it needs to be covered. Okay. Anybody have a problem with that?
I think that's good.
Okay, let's move on now.
Well, so looking at item six, as it reads now, how would you, how would you word this? Porches, decks, patios, a architecture of the primary pedestrian entrances must include. A covered porch or deck with an area of at least thirty square feet to protect the entrance from the elements. Eve overhang alone does not constitute cover.
So you need to take out deck because deck is not covered necessarily, porch is by description. So, okay, so, so on a manufactured home, which basically are big rectangles. How do you put a? How do you put a covered porch on this? And I, I know that's the reason we're doing this, but how do you put a covered porch on it? So it looks right.
We have a covered porch down the side that does not have a, a deck that actually. Petrueds out with the roof over it and it's architecturally the same as the house.
And then you're in a, are you in a manufactured home?
No.
Oh, okay, alright. Okay, well.
The point is, you can make a, an entryway with thirty square feet undercover. And have it still architecturally pleasing.
I, I think the past point was when you're building a stick house, that's easy. When you're trying to add a covered porch to a manufactured house, that's a little more challenging. And I can visualize manufactured homes, but I don't have the carpentry skills. To quite visualize how I would tie that porch into, and I think that Pat has that background and skills. So what? Make it smarter, Pat, I guess is what I'm saying.
It's not unusual for cities to require. Uh, additional stick-built structures on manufactured homes, city of Montesano demands a two-car garage. Slightly more challenging than a thirty square foot porch.
It, it, I'm not saying it's not doable, I'm just saying it's, it's gonna be a bit of a challenge. Because a, um, manufactured home typically comes, let's just call it twenty-four by. Fifty. And it's, it's a big rectangle and it's got a gabled roof on it, which is of say three twelve. And the entry on a manufactured home is typically on the side. Right, so somebody would have to build that porch structure and then tie it into the roof structure of the manufactured home. So, but that does serve the purpose of making. Manufactured homes look more like stick with homes, so I don't think it's a bad idea, I'm just. Playing the other side of the card here and just saying, hey, if, if I had my heart set on a manufactured home, now I've got a challenge. Yeah, I, there's, there's a manufactured home, I'm talking about, not only put on two-car garage, but you cover, put on four porch also. And it looks really good. Yep.
So what I'm hearing and I agree with is, is that it may be a challenge. But the, to, to, to use an extreme example, we don't want people to put up. Yurts, uh, with, with fur-covered yurts. To be permanent dwelling homes in the middle of the city. And so we're establishing those standards and it's up to the builder and the potential home buyer. To adhere to the standards that we're demanding they adhere to for the reasons already stated. Both aesthetics and, and long-term livability.
So in all fairness, out of the way, huh, we have smaller lots than what are typical in, in. Normal ocean shores and all of our homes have covered porches. And they're all at least thirty square feet, so I don't think this is unreasonable. All I'm doing is just playing the other side of it.
And I agree with you, I don't think it's unreasonable.
Okay, let's figure out how to change the wording, can you change the wording? And I think we kind of beat this one to death, so let's move on, but let's, let's get the wording right. Tanya?
Okay, thank you, Dan. Architecture of the primary pedestrian entrance, so one entrance, um, must include. A covered porch with an area of at least thirty square feet. To protect the entrance from the elements, eve overhang alone does not constitute cover. So I think we just need to clarify that that covered area is supposed to be. Thirty square feet as well.
Well, I think you did, a covered porch with an area of at least thirty square feet.
Okay.
I, I don't think you need to put in to protect the entrance from the elements, I.
I.
Irrelevant.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, so we take that out. And then what about eve overhang alone does not constitute cover, is that relevant?
Yes. One hundred percent, yeah.
Alright, so covered porch with an area, with a covered area, how about that?
Hold on, I'd like to go back to that.
Okay.
So I have seen homes where. They have their front door. May I say inset into the house where they have a very large. Hypothetically covered porch, but it's because they haven't pushed their front door out to the edge of the home, it's, it's in by ten feet.
Well, that works though.
So we, by what we just said, I think we just made those not acceptable. What, how do we feel about that?
I think that's fine.
I, I think the wording's still fine, Rich, it doesn't say that it makes it true.
But when you say the word an eve doesn't count. Technically, isn't that a, just the eve, it's not a separate roof line?
It's not an eve, it's, it's still a porch.
And it's covered, so I.
Covered.
I think that works.
So that's, so that, that's legal then, the way we're describing this?
Yeah, and eve is, is from the facial line back to the sidewall, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so, um, architecture of the primary pedestrian entrance must include a. Can I just say a covered area and remove the word porch, a covered area of at least thirty square feet? Or do we need the word porch?
You need porch.
Well, are they synonyms in, in this instance?
So a covered area, oh geez, could be like what you just described. Where it's, maybe it's concrete, I guess it's still a porch, but when I think of porch, I think of something that's jutting out from the house. I don't know if this is relevant, I might just be making things too complicated.
So a, as I'm visualizing what, what you're saying, Tanya. We've already said stipulated in the code that manufactured and, and, uh. Mobile homes as well as stickboat homes all have to have a crawl space, which means that they have to be elevated. So you can't walk out your front door onto the gravel ground. So anything that's elevated above the, 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 the level of the, of the yard is a porch. So I think that leaving this just like it is works just fine.
Okay, I'm good with that, are you guys all good with that? Okay, now regarding the current code allowing of encroaching, I don't know what code that is and I don't know if it's relevant to the changes we're trying to make. So that's something we'll need to research a little more, um, if, if you think that it is important.
I don't, I think, I think if we do this, then it is what it is and.
Okay, so we cannot worry about that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna delete that comment then, um. And then it sounds like we're talking about moving all of the changes to seventeen point five oh point two one oh. Is that correct, Richard?
I, I'm confused where you're at right now.
Sorry, I'm jumping around, I was looking at column two, uh, so we figured out that we want thirty square feet of porch. And then the question is, where do we put this in the code? And.
Fifty-two ten.
Okay, and so you're saying that for most of our recommendations, we actually. Add them all at seventeen fifty-two ten.
That's exactly correct, and the only exception to that, my memory is that, that item number one on this and maybe item number two. Specifically to manufactured or mobile homes, but this about porches applies. Whether it's a stick manufactured or mobile, uh, and so everything that is. Uh, that applies everywhere, I think belongs in, in seventeen fifty dot two ten.
Okay, alright, um, alright, so just to remind everyone what we're talking about. Column two is supposed to provide. The current code and where we were recommending putting the revisions in. So that council could compare side by side what the heck we were trying to change. Okay, so moving back to item six, I think we're good there, so we do have this question. If you look in column two where it's highlighted here under item six, we have. Our little special section for manufactured homes, R six C. And I think we might want to do something with this language under item H about decks, awnings, porches. Entries, outbuildings, carpets are permitted of a style compatible with the main structure, so it just says they are permitted, it does not say they are required.
Good point.
So do we want to require the same covered porch in that particular zone?
Yes. And, and.
I would say.
What you're saying in the left-hand column is that all homes have to have a minimum of a three-square-foot covered entryway. And I'm wondering, as I just say that, I wonder if covered primary entryway is better than covered porch. If that language is more, more, more concise. So in my mind, as I look at the, at the yellow highlighted in the, in the middle column there. I'm not sure that that applies anymore because our requirement for covered entryways is universal. There's not an exception, there's not, there's not, there's, there's no change because it's a manufactured mobile home.
Okay, so just to confirm if it's seventeen point five oh point two one oh, it applies to every single residential structure regardless of the zoning area.
Correct.
Okay, and so you're saying we could say just primary, primary pedestrian entrance must include a covered area.
A covered, say that again, what you just said.
So if we start at the top, item A, architecture of the primary pedestrian entrance must include. Take out a porch with a, and it would just say must include a covered area of at least thirty square feet.
I, I, I personally like that.
Yes.
We're good with that, everybody likes it?
Yep.
Alright, wonderful, so I'm gonna delete that, we've got that. And then we're suggesting that we insert that into seventeen point five oh point two one oh, along with all these other things.
Be, before we go on, uh, we, we never had a discussion about whether everybody agrees with me. That virtually all of these changes we're proposing belong in seventeen fifty-two ten. And I'd like to ask that question, how do the rest of you feel? Instead of having a, a bit here and a bit there, uh, and covering all of the various residential zones. That they're all just inclusive and that's civic spot fifty dot two ten.
So Richard, I think it might be helpful to pull up the other document in order to. Show people what that looks like. Okay, so if I pull that document up, um, can you guys see this now, it's a, it's a different document. I'm not exactly sure how to display this, so we're gonna have to work through this together. But this is, uh, Richard's, so this is Richard's document that he created for us, thank you so much, Richard. And, uh, we've got the building standards, we've got Richard's kind of overview of where we're at. So you guys can read this, this was sent out by Dan last week. So Richard is saying that. Said, so if you're looking at the top of the page with me here. He realized that code seventeen point five oh point whatever applied to all zones except as noted. And that seventeen point five oh point two one zero architectural features was the appropriate placeholder for code modifications that applied to all zones. So. Scrolling down here, a few things became apparent. Alright, so we would kind, I'm trying to find where we would.
If you go down, it's on page four of. Uh, and it starts with seventeen fifty miscellaneous provisions. And then it's a seventeen dot fifty dot two ten architectural, uh, features. And then the things that are in black are already in seventeen fifty-two ten. And the things that are in red are all of the items that I took off of the first document and added to seventeen fifty-two ten.
Thank you, that's awesome, okay, so did everyone follow that? Okay.
I, I have a question about the intent, Richard, what about in the certain areas on the northern side of town that. Are zone for, literally, I can pull my camper in there if I wanted to.
And, and, are an exception, and, and the, the, I, that's ordinance seventeen. Six A, I think, uh, that allows campers and, and so that ordinance. Doesn't include these because that ordinance says it, uh, that, that's campers only, and I'd have to go back and reread that. But, um.
I just want to make sure that those northern communities aren't, or zones aren't affected by this.
And, and that is my intent, they are not affected by this. And as we get deeper into the, to the actual code, uh, that we need, need to make sure, uh, that. I didn't inadvertently include those campers where I didn't intend to, I don't think I did. But, uh, I can use help at making sure.
Okay, so, um, did we get all of our items in this then?
I did put all of the items in here.
Okay, so we had however many. Alright, so then if you look at this, it seems very straightforward to just present this to city council and say we're recommending adding these. However many items, um, into. This code, so if we did it just like this, are there other places in the current code that we need to? Clean up or change?
So, so my suggestion, Tanya, uh, I think that you're doing a superb job at, at. Leading this discussion, my suggestion is we continue to go through your first document. Because that quantifies what we're looking at and changing. And I took the existing changes that you gave me from the last meeting and put them in this document. Where you're just looking at right now, uh, if we make any changes to the original document. My plan is, is you will record those changes, email them to me. I will modify this word document to reflect the changes we discussed today.
Awesome, okay. Alright, well, I think that we need to, is everyone okay with this idea of everything becoming seventeen point five oh point two one oh? Or, yeah, okay, um, so we need to clean up this, um, table. Take the column two that's supposed to be our edits and basically just keep Richard's changed to seventeen point five oh. And then insert the specific language that we're. basically just keep Richard's changed to seventeen point five oh and then insert the specific language that we're talking about. I'm, I'm trying to recall if we had, we were at item seven, and I believe we got through all of these things.
No, we, we, we did not.
We did not. Okay.
So a thing that you just said just a moment ago, when we present this to city council, because everything now is being put under two-ten, that I'm not sure that this document on the screen is still a meaningful document. It, it tracks the history of how we got to where we got to. And Sarah, I would ask you, what's your opinion? Does this document enhance the city council's discussion? Or does it confuse the city's council discussion? And if we just present the the document that was previously on the screen, the, the notes and changes. And then I would say, rather than even give the city council the, the original ordinance, if we just gave them this notes and changes, however we decide to, to, to title it and say, this is what we're proposing to be changed. And all the changes are in red and, and then the city council to rewrite the code because they're going to rewrite no matter what we give them, according to what Sarah told us last week.
I think I followed you. I think it makes sense. I think this table, the table that we're looking at is still useful with some pretty serious editing. So I like the idea of this format. And our working draft just needs to be cleaned up to be a final draft before we give it to council. And, and I think because we're just saying we're gonna create a whole new section of code, that change to seventeen point five oh point two one oh. And then you could just put item H or whatever it is in there. And then they could refer to your narrative document.
Correct.
So I think that's fine. I guess do we need to make sure that these changes we're proposing don't conflict with other parts of the code? Or does the code publishing service do that for us?
First, first of all, everybody has to remember, we, we send it to the mayor.
Yes.
Pushes it on to her, to the city employees. And that's the first edit we get. I, I think what we've done is, I don't think we have to necessarily make sure everything is new in another code.
No, okay. I think as long as no one has a different opinion, that makes sense. Okay, all right. So we started talking about sheds. We've, I don't know that we've really settled on this whole shed question, but we, we seem to all be comfortable saying a limit of three accessory structures per house.
And they do not have to match the architecture of the house itself.
Okay, did we come to agreement with that?
I believe we did.
What we're saying now on seven dot two is architectural style of a detached garage shop or shed must match the style of the primary structure. I think that we need to come to consensus on this language.
Well, I, I think Rich brought up the fact that there's lots of pre-made sheds that are some kind of a poly material that probably fifty percent of the people are using. And there's no way to make that architecturally compatible. And I don't think we want to limit people so they can't go out and buy an inexpensive yet halfway attractive shed for the gardening tools.
Even a greenhouse wouldn't qualify technically.
So yeah, we have at the bottom, this standard is not applicable to greenhouses or open-sided structures intended only to cover recreational vehicles or woodsheds or structures intended to screen utility connections or garbage cans.
And Eleanor, I, I very much agree with what you're saying. And maybe we need to say something like, if it's a stick-built addition, it needs to match the architecture of the house. But if it is a metal or a plastic structure, it is what it is.
I don't think we should punish people that actually build their own shed. If you want to build a cool, crazy shed, if we're gonna let other things fly, I think we should just let it fly.
A lot of people are building studios, and most of them are smart enough to have them match the house. So you know, it's one thing to have a shed that doesn't match the house. It's another thing to build a huge studio that sticks out like a sore thumb. I think we should differentiate.
How should we do it?
Is there some other way to turn accessory building? Because I think this, in my mind, there's a difference between accessory building and a storage shed. I know a lot of people who've built a studio, which is a stick-built structure that matches the house. And it's, quite frankly, it's very attractive. But I think that's a far cry from a garden shed.
Didn't we say something about if they were accessory buildings that needed a building permit, they needed to match? If they didn't need a permit, then we were leaving them alone?
My understanding is people can build a studio without a permit.
If it's the right size.
If it's under a certain size.
Right.
And I, that's correct. I think anything under two hundred square feet does not require a building permit.
I'm questioning that. I'm questioning that size, Richard. I, I've been, I haven't seen the facts, but I'm led, believe that that's not true. If it's on a vacant lot, that it's limited to, to less than that on a
It, that's correct.
What is it on a vacant lot? Is it just like an eight by ten or something, or?
Yeah, eight by ten or eight by eleven. We talked about this a few meetings back. So if anybody remembers.
I thought the vacant lot was a hundred and twenty square feet. Was the maximum size of
It's smaller than that.
Without a permit, then on a lot that you already have a house, it was a ten by twenty, correct?
Two hundred square feet, correct. That's, that's my memory. And I can't take, pay attention to this and look that up. If somebody else has an extra hand and wants to go ahead and look at that code, that would probably be helpful.
How do we move through this?
I got you, Tony. I got it. They plan only eight by tens allowed. And it has to be reviewed by the building department. That's passed today. And then no limit on sheds, no limit on the amount of sheds with the house. And sheds can be up to two hundred square feet without a permit with the house, any sign.
You said eight by ten on the
Vicken lot.
A vacant lot. So that's only eighty square feet.
Correct. And it can only have one window, one door. And it cannot be hooked up to power.
Is that ten by twenty allowed to be hooked up to power?
Yes. It's, it's with the house. So the rules change when you have a house on, on the lot. Then there, today, there is currently no limit to the amount of sheds that you can put on. And they can be up to twenty, two hundred square feet, any dimension.
With electrical?
With, yeah, electrical.
Do they allow plumbing?
You can't live in them.
Allow plumbing?
Yes.
Sure, because I, my memory is that as soon as you add water or electric, that it has to have a permit. And the intent behind that was to prevent people from building an accessory structure that, that gets under the table used as a living structure.
I don't think the electrical's in the permit. But I could be wrong, but I don't remember that.
So they can have power but no water? And they don't need permit?
I believe so. I'm pretty confident they can have power.
So, Tanya, you might put a note in there on the sidebar, check to see.
The power has to be permitted through electricity on a, on a two-hundred-square-foot shed on a on an occupied lot. Richard, how, anything you put power on, anything at all, has to be permitted through Eleanor.
I, I agree, Pat. I'm just saying that, that this is a discussion that I could lose track of. And a sidebar note, you know, a, a word comment note over there. Then I know that when I'm looking at it, I will remember to go and look up the code, which is too cumbersome for me to try to do in the midst of this, of this session. And all I'm saying is, yeah, let's just put a note so we remember to look up what the code says about electricity and water in an accessory structure.
Well, you know, guys, we're getting into a new issue. That's all we're talking about. We're not talking about putting power, water to them. That's a whole other issue. And I don't think we want to go there. That's already in the code. They have to have a permit to get that done. We had our heat pump changed out. We had to just change the pump out. So anything that is permitted, water, power, I don't think we address.
Dan, I think you're absolutely correct. And thank you for the, you know, for the, for the reminder and, and the insight. Power and electricity in all cases require a permit. And, and we don't have to address that because it's already addressed in the, in the permit code. I, I think you're absolutely correct.
So do we just want to say limited of three unpermitted accessory structures per house? And then we can make a note, unpermitted access, okay. Oh, wait, how about this? Structures under two hundred square feet are do not require a permit.
Still need to address whether they have to match the house or not.
Yes.
I'm not in favor of that personally.
We, we talked essentially, I think, last time. And, and I was one of the ones who, who, and I agree now that there are some beautiful sheds out there. We don't even come close to the like house that you can buy and we bring and we're all built and everything. So, yeah, I, I, I think we agreed to cross that. And ask them what.
Okay, are we all in favor of just crossing out and getting rid of that requirement that they must match the house?
Yes.
Okay. Everyone says yes. Okay. Speak now or hold your peace. Okay. Okay, so second sentence there, the standard is not applicable to greenhouses or open-sided structures intended only to cover recreational vehicles or woodsheds or structures intended to screen utility connections or garbage cans. We're okay with that?
If we took out the first sentence, then the second sentence has no meaning.
No, it still does because we're saying you can only have three unpermitted accessory structures per house. We don't want to count greenhouses and carports and woodsheds as part of those three structures.
I didn't read it that way. So what you're saying, and I'm clarifying for my own, you know, what you're saying is I could have three art studios and a woodhouse.
And a greenhouse and a carport. Yep.
A carport. But I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that that's what we're all wanting to say.
Well, you end up running into the area of coverage.
Exactly. And, and I think the area of covers, the area of coverage would limit how many structures can be put up. So, so I I, I think that we're all right. And I think that Tanya was correct. And I was short-sighted. We, we eliminate the first sentence and leave the second sentence. But I think that the second sentence wording could be
Better.
A little bit better so that it's clear that this is an exception to the three structure limit. And, and I'm having a hard time.
Okay.
So I can't think how to
Okay, what if we said greenhouses, open-sided structure, okay, blah, blah, blah. Sorry. If we say greenhouses or open-sided structures intended only to cover recreational vehicles or woodsheds or structures intended to screen utility connections or garbage cans do not count as do not, do not count towards the limit?
Restructure limit.
Okay, are we okay with that?
I like that personally.
I think we're getting better. Anyway.
I do want to point out, though, that you guys talk about the total area that is allowed to be covered on your lot.
Yes.
If you, if you've built your home and then you put up your three auxiliary non-permit needed structures, there is nobody on the planet that's going to call you out for having
Of course, yeah. Yeah, I agree. I was thinking the same thing. But that's not is that important here? Do we, do we want to try?
Just pointing it out that that maximum coverage will not actually apply.
Yeah, I wonder if it's even being enforced at all, even when people apply for a permit. I wonder if it's actually being enforced.
Pat would know that. Has anybody ever called you out, Pat, for how much of a piece of land you're covering with structure when it's new?
Just when they do the primary due. So when we do a plot plan, you have to put that information on, on the plot plan. And it, so that would be the only time. But that doesn't apply to this because once the structure's up or the house is up, then a person could put up as many sheds as they want.
Yeah.
And nobody's gonna stop them because they don't have to get a permit.
Yeah, this would be hard to enforce, wouldn't it? If there's no permit required.
There's still a limit to how much of the land you can cover. And I think we ought to put something in there that says that. I mean, there's still a limit. There has to be so much open land.
Just remind people?
Yeah, I think.
Okay. Per whatever code that is. Per code. Link. Only the maximum, there's a I don't remember the exact code.
I was thinking forty percent, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
Yeah.
Right, Eleanor, but I don't remember the code either.
Okay, so I'll just highlight that as something that needs to be cleaned up. Okay. So we're comfortable with this the way we are. We're gonna try to enforce, or we're going to try to impose a three three-shed limit.
What this gives is it gives the enforcement official an opportunity if there's five rundown sheds on a property to go in and have a little more punch. And you've got to get rid of two of these sheds. And these two that are broken down would be the ones to go. Just look around town.
Okay. Anybody else? Any thoughts? Okay, what about carports? Do we want to get into carports? Or do you just want to leave that alone for now?
I would like at some point to get into these carports that look like a tent on two stories still.
You mean like a pool building?
I'm not sure what they're called, but they're kind of a, a tent, just to, just to cover, just the top of it.
We excluded that. That would be a oh, what the heck did we say? Open-sided structures tend only to cover recreational vehicles. I think is what you're talking about. And possibly a pool building.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I had a discussion with the woman in the permitting department. I can't think of her name right now.
Nettie.
Right, Nettie. And, and I was and continue to think about a tent to cover my outside car. I, I don't have room in the garage. And I frankly can't I, I don't have room in the garage, and I frankly can't afford a 10 or $15,000 garage. And the whole carport issue and getting a carport, a middle carport that meets the 130 mile per hour sustained wind. So, so to cut to the chase, according to the existing code, I could put up a 200 square foot car tent. The existing code lets me do that. And I think that that's what Eleanor is talking about, but I'm not positive.
They look terrible, particularly when they're on the front of a building. And I have seen them on a street in town where there's a double one in front of the, uh, the house.
Well, according to the, the, the maximum size is 200 square feet. And, and there's two challenges, keeping it from kiting away in the wind and making it look like something better than a $160 Costco carton. And, and, and what we're addressing right now is aesthetics. And my point is, right now, my memory of my conversation with Nettie is that a resident can put up a, a 10 by 20 carport tent.
Eleanor, look on the bright side. At least they're going to have a front porch now.
Maybe on the side.
Okay, are we, are we just wanting to leave that alone for now, or do we want to dig into this idea of carports?
I'd like to dig in, but I think I might be alone on this.
I just feel like maybe we're not prepared for that. Sorry.
I make a motion that I'm too chicken to handle this one.
Well, and I'll add that this is a good illustration of us getting way beyond our original scope.
Well, it makes sense to discuss it while we're looking at similar things, but I think I just feel like we're not prepared. We don't really understand the current codes very well, and I'm not sure what we're trying to achieve.
I would just, at some point, like to discuss it. It does not have to be at this point. Because I do agree with Greg, we need to move on and get this done. It's been a huge project, and thank you, Tanya.
Yeah, and again, it's going to be six months before, at, at a minimum, before this ever gets qualified.
All the lots will be built out, and we won't need to worry about it. Okay, um. So, moving on, so we talked about screening. I thought we did a really good job of that last time. We, I remember we wordsmithed that quite a bit.
I thought we did a great job. I appreciate the, uh, voice from the public.
Yeah.
But, uh, we, we went over this really well.
So, Pat, I don't know if you were around for that conversation. I can't remember at what point you had to go. Do you have any concerns about what we've written for the screening requirements?
No, no, I'm good with the screening requirement.
Okay.
You know, the public comment that came back earlier about enclosing propane tanks. We do it all the time at Oya and with no issues at all.
And you have very small lots, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, I don't think our intent it was to screen the utility boxes that are sitting out in the street. We're just talking about trying to do a best job to hide the candy canes, the, um, you know, heat pump, condensers and, uh, things like that. I, you know, I don't know if we need to be more descriptive of that or what. But that's the whole idea, is just to make those things not be so prevalent when you're driving by a house.
Right. Okay. And this would apply to existing structures? Or would it only be?
I don't see how you can do that.
Yeah.
So I, I have a comment on screening that, that, uh, I had a conversation with the electric meter reader. Uh, and I'm not, I don't remember whether it was in this community or a different community, but particularly when there's fear of dogs in the yard, I have non-electric meter readers to, to, to read the meter with a, with a spyglass, uh, uh, from, you know, from outside the fence. And if we screen that meter, now that doesn't happen. Is that a problem?
That's why we need the builders to put the meters on the side so it's not on the street face.
Well, sometimes that's realistic and sometimes it's not, Rich, because sometimes if you're putting them on the side and there's a garage in the way, it's going to cost thousands of dollars to run that extra wire to get them up and over the top of the garage and down into the meter base. So, what you're talking about could be a significant financial burden. I don't really, I personally don't really have an issue with the, with the, um, meter base being in the front of the house. It, it just, if it's, if somebody paints everything but the meter the same color as the house, it pretty much goes away anyway. But, but I think what you're talking about could cost a lot of money if, if we make it, make that a requirement.
The least having them screened with shrubbery would be helpful. I heard what Richard said, but.
Well, my, my experience, and that's the case in my house right now, is, is the, uh, the conduit that runs up to the meter is painted the same color as the house. And the meter just fades away. It, 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 it just doesn't stick out. And I can understand that meter reader not wanting to go into a yard for fear of a dog. I, I, I totally get that. I've been bitten three times.
Hogs can smell fear, Richard.
And that may be it, and, and I'm concerned about big fangs.
Well, I think most of the meters are actually ru- red electronically.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I, at least in my neck of the woods, they are.
I guess I'm thinking, you know, we're not unique. Every community has meters. So I feel like maybe this particular detail is not something we should even really tackle, and I don't know, maybe our language needs to clarify that?
I don't know. I thought we achieved the original intent of why we even started this project, and meters on the front of the house were one of the big issues that are out there with, with some homes. Plant screening was a natural. You guys are right, covering up the meters with paint other than the, the bases is very, very helpful, but just to ignore this isn't in tune with what we started this whole project for.
Okay.
And just for clarification, so everyone knows, only about one third of the meters in the city of Ocean Shores are electronically red meters. You have to be checked manually.
For the, for the electric.
And what is the plan for?
Oh, no, not for, no, no, not for electric, for.
For water.
Electric.
Yeah, the water meters are at the road. Right? So we don't, we don't see those.
Yeah, they're not on the, yeah, so you don't, but I just wanted to let you know that people think that the meter reading is all done, uh, electronically. It's not.
Thank you. That's good to know.
Pat, do you know what PUD is doing? Are they electronic now?
As far as I know, um, yeah, they're all electronic.
So this is a moot point anyway.
Yep.
We can screen them and nobody's going to need their binoculars.
Do we need to confirm with PUD? I mean, how far do we need to go with our due diligence here?
Guys, I personally think that screening a meter is, is, I, I don't think that's personally, I just, I think that's taken a little bit too far.
We'll just stick in there after all mechanical, except PUD. And get on with it.
Okay, how about this? Okay, all mechanical equipment, including public utilities, except for those portions allowing meter reading or routine, uh, routine maintenance? No, that doesn't help. Something like that?
Uh, I just.
How about, how about when possible? How about that?
It's convenient.
The way it is, and screen them when possible. Something.
That's, that's too open ended, isn't it? I mean, I, I.
Well, you, it's better, it's better than what you have now, which is now giving everybody the right to not do a damn thing to it.
But we are still, I mean, everybody could say, well, it's, it's just not possible. I don't know. I'm just.
Again, there's going to be five levels of review after we send this on, one including city employees.
We cannot assume that other people will fix our mistakes, that we should do the best we can before we send it on.
Well, I'm an 80/20 guy, and I don't agree with that. I, we're, we're going to spend 80% of our time trying to fix 20% of the problem.
And then miss the boat, yeah, I hear you.
At any rate. Again, time is of the essence. We're really trying to get some standards out there that will deal with manufactured homes.
Well, this was one of the biggest things. Trust me, when you buy, when you drive by one, take a look and notice.
I get it. I've driven by a lot. We, you know, we did a field trip, and I understand it.
How about this? At the very end, we say meters requiring routine visual access. Need to be screened. Is that okay?
Yep.
For the hypothetical mean dog in the front yard.
Okay, let's move on.
Thanks, guys. Okay, and we're moving on. I think we oh, and then lighting. We worked through the lighting. I thought we were happy with that. Um, the front and side yard uses. I think we're good with this as well. If we can just put this into the 17.50, point 210. So just, if you need to read that, let me know. I don't want to go too fast for you guys. So basically, we're saying no portable anything unless it's a short term situation and they need to be gone within 72 hours. We're good with that? I will take that as a yes. Okay, moving on. I think that was the end of it. Okay, so what that means is we go back to Richard's document. And we revise this with the things that we tweaked today. The biggest one would be the sheds, I believe. So I can go through and make sure that this language in Richard's document reflects the language in the document that we collectively worked on today. I can also take these items and insert them into column two for each specific change so that council can see that. I think the remaining question in my mind is, do we need to go through and correct anything else within the code, or, or can we just leave it at the 17.50, point 210? And call it good?
So, so my only comment, and it goes back, I already mentioned this, uh, on item K of this document, I reworded that. Because it was, uh,
Well, we, we reworded it again today, so during the meeting, we talked about that, so that's going to get changed again. That was where, item six, wasn't it? Seven. Wait, sorry, I'm, I got distracted. Okay, so, oh, court porch is right. Okay, so we're back on porch as item six. Okay. I see Ann has a comment. Are we, we're almost through this, Ann, and then I think we'll open it up to comment again if. Yeah, okay, so we would just take this that we worked on today and plop that in there. Is, oh, you can't see my screen. Sorry, I forgot. Here we go. Okay, so Rich, that item K is going to become, um, item six as we wrote it today.
Perfect.
Okay, all right, so then, so the next step is revise Richard's narrative version, revise this, this table document. I basically think I'm erasing everything except columns one, two, and three. I think that's correct. Let me go back up to the top here, so we're all looking at the headings. Um, so basically, we're going to submit this to council. We're going to have column one, which refers to the item number, column two, which is the proposed revision, column three, which is supposed to reference the current code, but we're actually not changing current code. We're proposing all new code. So, um, I'll revise this to say, um, where to well, this doesn't make sense. Okay. So we've got the revision, and we've got where we're going to put it into the code, and I'll, I'll revise these headings so they reflect that. And then, um, we have Richard's item in red, which is basically change everything except for this item number one into a new item in 17.50, point 210. I'm going to remove the related code column because it doesn't sound like we need that. And I'm going to remove the PC comments column because city council doesn't need to see that either. That was just for our use as we worked through the discussion. And then I'll leave this approved revision. Should I relieve that so they can use this as a working?
They, I think, Tanya, they can create their own format for how they're going to review and approve the revisions.
Right. Maybe we show this and offer it to them, and they can say we don't want that. I don't know. Just.
Right.
Okay, so that's where I think we need to go. Um, we, you might remember last time we had created a cover letter, or not a cover letter, but like a, an overview page that just gave a, a basis statement for why we were making these recommendations for each item. And I need to find that. Uh, where would that be? Page one, is that it? Okay. Sorry, guys, I don't have that pulled up. I'm going to have to find that. Um, and then the final step would be to actually write a cover letter. I think we should write a cover letter that just very, very briefly is like a memo form that says this is what we did, this is why, and these are the items included in this packet.
Cover letter.
I could, I could draft it and then send it out to you guys for a review. Does that work?
What I'm hearing is if you draft a cover letter and send it out, we have to have one more meeting before this can be released to the mayor.
Do we have to have a meeting, or could?
If, if we, if, if, if we approve a cover letter, we're having a meeting, whether we do it in the open like this, or whether we do it through email, it's, it's a violation of the Public Meetings Act.
Well, in the past, Dan has simply verbally spoken to the mayor, so maybe this time we don't include a cover letter, and we just carry on with the verbal tradition. I don't know. That's a decision for.
Well, I, I think everybody wants to approve the final draft. What I'm hearing, there's some changes to be made, so we can have a quick meeting on this. And if we wanted to do a cover letter, that'd be fine. We could probably get it done within 10, 15 minutes and move on to whatever our next subject is, which I don't know. But I'll have contact with the mayor to get that. So, why don't we do that? So we all file it together, but I don't want to spend a lot of time on it. Just put the quick changes, and let's go. Okay with that?
Yeah.
Tanya's going to draft a cover letter. Uh, she's going to present both of these revised documents. Uh, and, and Tanya, any editing changes you make to my notes and, you know, whatever I call that, notes and whatever, your revised doc changes you make to that, I'm all good with that. I, I do not get emotionally attached to, to those kinds of things.
Thank you.
And it's easier for one person to drive the boat than to have three skippers or two skippers. So change it, present it at the next meeting. Uh, we will all have read your changes. And then as Dan. Uh, and then as Dan said, we can just say thumbs up, let's go. Uh, and then we're moving on to whatever's next.
Perfect. Um, Richard and Dan, do you want to look at the packet I put together between now and the next meeting so that you can give me a, some feedback on it before we all meet on it?
Sure, we can do that.
Thanks. Okay, Greg. Okay, okay, awesome. Moving forward, I'm giving it back to you, Dan.
Okay, um, Anne. You have a comment?
Uh, actually, yeah, um, just real quick, I gave most of it to Tanya in a chat message.
Oh.
I know she was struggling with wording, so I looked up the International Residential Code, which is adopted by Washington with the exception of, you know, they've got some amendments to it, but they didn't amend the areas that we're actually talking about. And so, um, the IRC twenty eighteen, chapter three.
We don't, we don't use IRC twenty eighteen, we use twenty fifteen.
Okay, well, um, according to what I found online, Washington State has gone up to twenty eighteen, but that, neither here nor there, it's just about the language. So everybody, she was kind of struggling with how to word a porch and describe it. And in the code book, they actually refer to it as landings rather than a porch. Oh. Um, and in, if, if you follow the, the links, I quoted exactly what some of them are, and there was one that I didn't quote. And that talks about how to attach it so that it's actually at the front door and not, you know, someplace else. Um, or separate of the structure. And so that's, that's in there too for, it says exterior landing, six balconies, so on, shall be positively anchored to the primary structure to resist both vertical and lateral forces. Um, so just what I gave you in the chat. Uh, it, it describes the minimum standard. So we're, you were writing in there thirty square feet. Leaving my opinion about thirty square feet out, the code book requires a minimum, uh, width of, to, to equal that of the door opening or the door itself and a minimum depth, which is your dimension in the path of travel of thirty six inches. Um, so obviously thirty square feet is more than that, but the key is, is that path of travel being thirty six inches. That would keep somebody from making their front porch two feet by you know, fifteen feet in order to get to thirty. Uh, you've got to have that thirty six. So those are, those are some key things that if we're going to describe thirty square feet, we want to make sure that, that they're meeting the rest of whatever applicable code is out there. So, and, and it's best if we use a language of those code books. Which is landing. It also talks about the elevation of those landings.
Okay, that's helpful. Um.
So that's all. I just wanted to, to pass that info on for your wording on this, just to be consistent.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I got to go to the appointment. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Anne. So my comment on what Anne has just said is, is she's given that information to Tanya in a chat. And I'm perfectly okay with Tanya incorporating that chat. I understood what, what Anne was saying. Tanya incorporates that into this document, uh, and, and it comes back for our final improvement, approval at our next meeting. I'm good with that and, and, and I don't know if that needs a thumbs up around or, or whatever. Um, but I thought that those comments were valid and Jermaine.
Thanks. I'm, I'm, I opened it up into the screen, so you guys should all be able to see her comments now. I, I'm not sure exactly how we'd use them yet, but at least we're all looking at the same thing.
Well, my thought is, Tanya, is as, as you are making the edits that you're making, uh, then you incorporate these as looks appropriate. Um, um, and as Pat pointed out, we're not quoting the IRC. We're just quoting or using language so that we're consistent, uh, with the state.
Right, so it's easy to say thirty square feet with the, um, with dimensions being not less than thirty six inches.
Does everybody, anybody have a problem using landing versus porch?
Yes, I like that.
I like that too. Covered landing.
Covered landing, exactly.
Pat?
I, you know. So the code already says it's got to be thirty six inches out. Um, which is the direction of travel out of the door. Um. We're saying that. So I don't believe that we're trying to change the IRC. I don't think we can. But what we can say is that that's got to be covered. Um, but I don't think doing it in this code is the right place to do it.
Well, it wouldn't be in the code. It would be taking the language of the code and putting it into our edits to the city ordinance so that we're using the same vocabulary.
Okay.
Exactly.
What, Pat, is, in our current code, do we talk about porches and landings?
Sorry, Dan?
In our current code, do we talk about porches or landings?
And the, the, the current code does, is that, it does say thirty six inches measured in the direction of crap.
The building code, but not the city code, right?
Well, but we adopted the building code, so it by default is the.
Okay, okay.
So I guess we're done with this, right?
But it doesn't talk about covered in our building code.
So we're adding that.
We're adding that.
Okay. I will add the word landing and I will not worry about the rest of it because it's already in the building code. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. All right, um.
Cool.
Okay, I guess we can go to reports now.
We can go to what? I couldn't hear you.
Go to reports now? And I have one. I'm reporting to you guys. Uh, the mayor did send me an email about the homeless shelters going, being allowed to be one, be two, and be three zones. And she asked me if the plan commission had written. Uh, worked on it extensively if we wanted to be part of the changes. And I said, no.
I didn't follow what you just said, Dan. Can you repeat that?
Sure. Intel homeless shelters can go in B one, B two, and B three. The mayor wanted to know, because we did all the work on them, what we gave them. Um, did we want to be part of the change? And revisit it. And I said, no. It's a simple change. The council can do that by themselves. We don't need to do that.
I agree.
And she agreed with me. But it was a council person's request that, that they contact the planning commission. So it, it's only a change of where it goes. We had a hard time deciding where it goes anyway. We couldn't all agree on that. So the rest is fine. So that, we'll let them make the change.
I agree.
I, I, I agree. The, the state has said they can, they can put it up anywhere that, 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 that there's a motel. Uh, and would, the, the.
Actually, more than that, residential as well.
Hmm, not.
No.
No, not, not with B one, two, and three.
No, we're talking about state, state laws that have changed since we discussed creating special B districts.
So that's what the state legislation did, said that if we're off, any hotel goes uh, homeless, it could go, which is B one, B two, B three.
Yeah, but that's not in a residential area.
No.
Residents could be in that area, but it's not zoned residential. Okay.
Wow. Okay. Nice.
Anybody got anything else?
Uh, I got an idea for a future topic. Maybe.
Okay.
Uh. Back in twenty seventeen, when we were working through this particular item uh, on building, uh, designs, we also made recommendations for some changes in zoning in the city. And I don't know what the status of that is. I don't know if, uh, um, I don't know if it was forwarded to the city council or if there's something that we needed to do in addition to what we did back then. Eleanor, you probably remember us going over the map and making recommendations for zoning changes throughout the city.
It, it, I don't think we can do anything until they pass the top one.
Do we still have that map? We had a huge map that we marked up. Do we?
Right. Right. So that's a technical question, Dan, then, because the city, as I understand it, is going through the comp plan on a, on a chapter by chapter basis. Once they get through the chapter on housing, for example. Um. Does that mean it's done or are they going to wait and get through the entire document before they say it's all done?
What, what, what they have done so far is pass each section with uh, they can make updates for the current situation. So, but the zoning, what we did for the zoning, that wouldn't be affected by that, but um, I, I don't think they've done that chapter yet. And they didn't work on a chapter, they didn't bring a chapter forward at the last council meeting. And, and I'm not sure why, because the one they're working on is chapter seven, which seemed to be more of an easy point. So I think they still have, um, the one with the map in it. I still don't think they have that to go through, but I'm not exactly sure. But until the comp plans totally are passed, we're not going to make any changes with both.
Well, that's, that's unfortunate because, I mean, again, we, we, we wrapped our arms around this particular item on, on design standards because we thought it was urgent. Um, and those zoning changes I consider to be equally urgent.
Who right now has that huge map that we colored, Greg? Do you know?
Boy, Eleanor, I don't know. I don't know if Linda's still got that. I don't know. I don't know what Linda did with all of that material that we had, um, assembled as we, we went through that.
I believe we should check and see, Ben, if you would check to see if they're still in the, the planning department. Because that map was really helpful.
Yeah, I backed up a small version of that map. But it's really hard to read.
Yeah. Well, at any rate, I, I think, you know, like I said, I, I think there, as, as time goes on, we're just losing our opportunities on, um, making those kind of modifications and compromising of the development the way we envisioned it.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you.
Well, you might plant that seed with the mayor that there are some, some items that we wrestled long and hard with uh, in assembling the comp plan that, um, perhaps deserve a level of priority.
My, my bet is, is that those documents are probably in the planning office. And there was a temporary staff member, uh, that was working with Alicia, and I don't know if she's still there or not. Scott would know. Uh, my bet is, is that big map, uh, is in the planning office.
Yeah, Sherry Field will be who that would be, and, um, it's, it's very possible that it's over there. Um, I mean, if you, if you send me, uh, just send it to me, a detailed instruction, if, if you're just looking for the map, we can find that. If there's something else, other documents you need. Um, I can have those pulled for you.
Well, I, I brought it up as a, as potentially our next topic. If, if we needed to do something to help the, the commission elevate, uh, the, the, uh, council elevate that in terms of priorities.
Okay.
I have a, a, a brief, uh, the library meeting room, uh, is open, although there are some restrictions on it. And so my question is, are we going to go to live meetings? Are we going to continue to meet on Zoom? Uh, and I think that Pat, my memory is that Pat offered the room upstairs in the, uh, in, in the, uh, real estate office over there. Uh, my wife, when I mentioned that, said she, it's not uh, handicap accessible, so is it a legal place to meet? Uh, so my question is, how much longer are we going to continue to meet on Zoom? And where, if we, uh, get away from Zoom, where are we going to meet at?
Well, we can't meet. Wait, we've got a challenge on that when we tried to do it first time. So, and I'm not sure what the restrictions on the library are, but I contacted the mayor and asked that question.
I would like to vote that if we go back to meeting in person, that we do Zoom as well, if, if we can work that out, because I really actually prefer meeting on Zoom routinely.
I, I will tell you, having done meetings both ways and also having live meetings with people on Zoom.
That's really bad. Yeah.
People on Zoom literally get ignored and they don't hear very well, unfortunately.
You are right. You are right.
Yeah, I think it's all or nothing. So we'll ask that question. I've heard rumors that council may go back in July to live meetings. But I don't think that was passed yet. They're hoping to, at least some council members are. So we can ask questions, but Richard, do you know what the restrictions are for the library?
I don't know what the restrictions are. Uh, I would suggest that you could call the librarian, uh, Keitha. Um, and, and she would let us know. And my bet is, is the number of people that can be allowed in the room.
That's a pretty large room now, though.
And it's rare that we ever have that many people, but every once in a while, we may talk about chickens again.
We need. Yeah.
We have a convention center.
Well, but the rent on the convention center is pretty high.
I don't know. Okay.
I, I, um, I think the library, I don't want to say it. I'm looking at it right now. It's on the website. I thought like July twelfth, it's going to open back up again.
Oh, thanks. Cool.
Okay.
That's my recollection.
Uh. Taking the notes next time, it was supposed to be Tanya.
All right.
Can you do it so Tanya can finish? And then we'll just switch you to.
Who, who did you want to do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Take the notes.
For me to do it?
Yeah, could you do it next time so Tanya can finish up?
Yeah.
Because you were scheduled to be the next one.
Yep.
So Pat will do the notes next time. I have a motion adjourned.
I'll move.
Okay, so move. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.